Unfortunately, to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, thank you all for joining us for the March 2024 Mount Jewett Borough Council Meeting. As always, we will be starting with anything from the public, as there are quite a few people. A reminder that we do have a five-minute limit that we try to hold people to. It's longer than you think, almost no one ever makes it to five, but I just wanted to let everybody know. And with that, whoever would like to go first may do so.
I'll go first.
Alright.
I'll start it. So, okay, several months ago, I don't know where it was now, a bid was taken and received for that house next to the American Legion. Nothing has ever been done to it. Was it not supposed to be either torn down or repaired so it doesn't look the way it still looks today?
My understanding was it was going to be torn down and something was going to be built in its place. I do not have a timeline, Brett, do you know something?
Yeah, the people who bought the house, my neighbors, Kathy Martin's house, they put in for the blank grant, myself and Barbara helped them obtain all the paperwork for the project. That should be getting approved here by the county commissioner shortly. It's not that they don't have the funds to tear it down, but if there's funding available through the county,
Okay.
they decided they would take that option and they're waiting on the results of that. But they intend fully to, and if you drive by, you'll see where they had it surveyed, so they know where their property lines are. So it's not, they're not doing anything, and they also hope to acquire the house next to it if at all possible, that's in disrepair. So it's just waiting on the county to do their part.
Okay.
Is that satisfied?
Yeah, that was, well done, satisfied, yeah.
Answer. We'll go with the answer. Alright, who wants to go next?
I'll go next. I'm here on behalf of Mount Jewett Sports Boosters.
Alright.
And I was just wondering, like, up at the field, like, in left field, there's like a low spot that they fill every now and again.
Mm-hmm.
I was wondering if, like, you guys had the resources for some fill, or could let us know where we could get some fill?
Just to clarify, that's not just like a low spot, it is a hole that sinks. The field is built on a bunch of downed trees, and so that's the one spot that routinely, it ends up, you know, dirt falls through, you know, the trees, you know, are slowly fading away under there. But we've all been, almost lost ballplayers in that hole a lot of times. So we're in that position again this year where we just need to get that, you know, filled in.
Don't you have something in the ground rules that covers that?
Sky, where's it at in the field?
It's right out, way out in left field.
Right out in left field?
Yeah, it's out in left field.
I gotta make a Pennsylvania one call tomorrow for a super-related project, and I know this came up last year in the fall, and we had talked about possibly contacting Mark Severance, and I'm glad you brought it up. He has a small mini excavator that can go in there, track in and not destroy anything. And I think what really needs to happen is dig it up and get to the root of it and then fill it. I'll reach out, contact him, and have him come up and take a look, and we'll get an estimate and see what we can do, and get ahold of the council people and see what it's, what it's gonna cost. I think it should be taken care of before people are on the field, so it's, it's not an emergency, it could be.
What's the timeframe on it?
I wonder, he's just gonna say, they start practicing on the field.
Okay, well, I expect to have him up here with the PA one call by next week, and he's gonna do some work at a buddy of mine's house as well. At least get him up to take a look, and then we can see what we have at the Borough lot. I know that we have a lot of millings and a lot of other stuff up there that we might be able to dig some out, get rid of some of the debris, and then fill it, I guess.
That's fine.
I mean, it's not that the Borough doesn't have a backup, if we take that big thing out there and the way, we're gonna mess the whole field up.
If there's gonna be someone here that soon, at least we can get a sense of what we're gonna, we can go from there.
Proper piece of equipment before you go.
Right.
If you don't hear anything from me within a week, you have my contact.
Fine, I know where you're from.
Yeah, just call, you'll be reminded.
So there's a was also.
And also, we're getting some, like, fifty-fifty mix to put on the infield.
Okay.
And it comes in, like, big sacks, was that three-quarter?
Yeah, three-quarter.
Three-quarter ton sacks, we were wondering, do you have a certain spot that you want them set?
We're gonna keep them out of the way, obviously, but we have to have them close to the field so that we can.
Could you put them where that, for the basketball field, and you guys had that, um, what the hell, my dog.
There was a shed.
The shed, could you put right there beside the shed, level that out right there?
Well, we don't have the means to level anything, like, behind it, behind that shed, there's, there was a bunch of dirt dumped in there.
Right, okay.
That would either be pulled out of there, and then we have somewhere to put it. Otherwise, if we put it, like, on, like, the shed is here, the field's here, right beside the shed is probably gonna end up being in the way of cars, you know, coming around that corner.
Well, we got a backup, if somebody go up and show the guys what's suitable, if somebody's around during the day, I don't think they, it'd only take them a couple minutes.
It'd be the least of it, yeah.
Because when they deliver it, they're gonna actually have a truck to put it wherever you want.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you guys, somebody can reach out with, with Borough and talk to Rick and John, and John's involved with Sports Boosters, I'm sure that he would, you know, at one of your meetings, you know, they'd go up and move a little pile or something for you, it would be that, whatever is convenient, if actually we had a problem.
That'd be great, yeah, that's, we just wanted to make sure we didn't have it somewhere that you wish.
And then the last thing would be, like, the electric that was done around, like, the concession stand, the batting cage, there's like some holes and some pipes sticking out, we were wondering if that would be taken care of before the fall gets.
Kids were playing in that last year, and then the threat of, you know, with so many people in that area, somebody getting hurt.
Are you guys gonna put the back stuff up for the minor league field this year, for the backfield?
We have a net already purchased that we're gonna put up there, and then we're definitely gonna mark out the field, based with stakes and stuff, we have, you know, the money for everything, but, yeah, definitely intend, you know, to get that all marked out. So, and then. Oh, I know, the only other thing is every year, you know, the guys mow up there, and I don't know, like, if they're on a regular schedule of how often they mow, but with the teams that we have up there playing, if at least once a week it gets mowed, with obviously pending or, you know, anything like that, but just so it's down that it gets mowed at least once a week. That would be so helpful for the, for the team's plan.
That should be fine. That's what I'm already having, I'm not sure it bounces with you. Yeah.
Alright, Hilltop Heritage Charter Planning Meeting last week, we have a lot of schedules, I just have a couple of questions. Is Heritage Park allowed to have activities there that may include baseball games, pumpkin walk, and then also our jingle party that happens in December?
The reason this question is coming up is because there was some comments that the park was designed as a memorial park and should not be used for events such as that, and if that is the case, the coalition was unaware, it certainly isn't trying to disturb the peace in a way that is inappropriate.
Well, I know that what we've always said is, with any of our parks, as long as you guys let people know and make it available, it's available. It wouldn't be a problem, we would've said something last year.
That's what I thought, I would've thought, I just wanna make sure for 2024, we're still okay to use that park as.
As long as you give us the dates.
Okay, and I do have lots of dates. Just for Borough-wide items, we do have our sprinkling that has been scheduled for May eighteenth. If everybody can be praying for no rain that day, that would be much appreciated. Also, the talk has been for the lunches, we are looking to possibly go to the Gallup Park. I spoke with Sky earlier today regarding their schedule during the week for lunches. I think that would probably be best, so I'll reach out to Barb on that. Is there anything else that happens up at that field during the summertime that we would need to be aware of Monday through Friday? Anyone else here?
The hours are what, eleven to twelve?
Eleven to twelve.
Then we, we would be using the park anyway.
Also, and I know, we did our scheduling for the year, but is there any way I can confirm when Halloween will happen for the town? And I know that's a long time away, but.
It'll be the thirty-first.
Okay, just making sure we're good on that date, because we do host the Trump Retreat. Also, May eighth, or June eighth is the birthday party at Mount Jewett. We're going to do a car show, again, we did a car cruise last year at Lincoln Center, we're trying to do a car show. And more details are coming up, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. Also, the memorial baskets, our family is donating six baskets for the lights. I just need to know, who do I talk to, as I don't own those bowls? Who do I talk to about installing flower baskets, et cetera?
Barb and I will probably be sitting down to figure out what kind of baskets we wanna do, as far as how they're gonna be watered, how they're gonna be maintained, what's the best approach, I haven't started that yet.
Okay, alright, sounds good, and then also the playground, do we have a status of the installation? Is something being weighed on the Heritage, or is that?
We're waiting for you guys to get your installer, get, to get it installed, get it inspected.
Okay. I know we have reached out to Gary here as an installation, has he approved? I'm assuming he has done other work for you guys, if he would be a, okay, thank you. Alright.
How many baskets do you need?
We were gonna do the lights along the business district, I don't know how many that is, like, six, maybe, do you know?
What do you call the business district?
Probably like up to the post office, from the end here.
We have what, twenty, Brett, on poles?
I'm not doing all twenty, love you guys. No, I was gonna start here, because that way it kind of pretties up this area, which has kind of been our focus with a lot of what we're doing, and then try and see if we can encourage other people to.
Just organize how many, how many poles you wanna do.
Yeah, I, I think that's gonna be a determination based on price, to be honest with you, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Okay.
A lot of people, do you?
Just real quick, and with Tom Schip, we're working with the Westline Trail Club, we're committed fifteen thousand dollars, dollar-to-dollar matching grant, that will be done with Westline thought to through the Guppy Road. Hopefully by the end of the summer, you won't be able to drive along Block, wherever you wanna take down through there, all the way from Guppy. So that's been quite a while since it's been in that good of a condition. So looking forward to that, and just a couple questions, is there any update on the cell phone tower? You're putting it down by line bill, or the?
They were pumping concrete today, they had the rebar all tied together and ready to go. I'm gonna head down after the meeting, because they had so much construction equipment down there, I couldn't put down to the bottom of the pond today, so they told me it would be a month and a half to two months before it was up and ready to roll, so hopefully sometime here in May.
Can't say the water's holding up.
Yes, that's for sure, they're going.
And any news on how your marketplace is? Any interest in making that number?
Not that we're aware of.
Following up.
Am I able to get close enough to the cell phone tower to get a picture of them working down there?
Should be able to.
If not, will you send me one?
Yeah, I can send you one.
Thank you.
Right, anybody else have anything out there? Alright.
Okay, give me a mark, I'll remind you.
Okay.
With that, we will close. Public comment, and we will move on to the Mayor's Report, Madam Mayor.
I don't have a ton, but I just wanted to thank everyone who helped make the McWhoppe Dinner, such a great success. There were sixty-two, sixty-one people that attended, so it was a great showing at that dinner from around the area. And Barb, I mean, did a lot of work, so thank you so much. And thank you to the Mount Jewett Swedish Association for donating ornaments to everyone that was there. We were from, Representative Cogger, that was great to hear from him, so it was a very nice dinner, and I think a good reflection of our community. And.
Alright, what, should we accept the Mayor's Report?
Motion.
Second.
Tom motions, Brett was faster, second, all those in favor?
I didn't say nothing.
Was that not you? Frank? Frank got that, sorry. Did he oppose? Alright, moving on, Maintenance Report.
Make caution, accept the Maintenance Report.
I have a question, Brett, I didn't get a talk, chance to talk to Rick and John. I see the sign out west end of town, the Borough sign getting knocked over, and somebody ran off and hit it, or?
It was down in the wind the other day, when it got really windy, I talked to John.
Car parked lane there, so I was wondering if a car got it, or a vehicle got it, you know?
Very well be, it's actually a state sign, but I talked to John yesterday and asked him to put it back up. I didn't.
I thought it was our Borough sign.
I believe they did it today.
Okay, actually, that's, it's our Borough signs on top, but it's kind of not, sorry. But they were gonna go down today and take care of it, I paid attention when I left out today.
Alright.
I'll second it.
Chris makes the motion, I believe that was Brett with the second.
That was.
All those in favor?
I'm right.
Are you opposed? Alright, take a look at the Borough Manager's Report, alright.
Okay, I went to the nine-one-one center on the twentieth of February for that Hazard Mitigation Plan Meeting. They gave me a bunch of stuff, I had film, forms I had to fill out, they've been done, they've already been sent, and there'll be another meeting in June where we'll begin working on the plan. Of course, if any of you are interested, you're more than welcome to go. If we don't go, then we're not eligible for federal funding, should something happen in the community, just so. We met with the Eats Group regarding the engineering for the Pocket Park. They'll do the design work today, or this year, but the bids will not be put out until the end of the year, and the project will not break ground until next spring. She already reported on the McWhoppe Dinner. My audit was completed on Wednesday, February twenty-first, everything looked great. Only had one or two general journal entries to, that you do to make everything where they should be. We should be getting the audits themselves sometime this week, by the end of the week. I have a property on Testnet Street, and it has a house and a trailer on it. I'd like to have Russ Braun look at it, the trailer's actually falling off the piers, so it's kind of dangerous. The house is in pretty bad shape, but I also have a couple other ones, if you guys are okay with having him come up and look at them. And that's up to you. Okay, and then I've sent several letters out regarding, like, people parking on the sidewalk and several other little things, so I think that's taken care of, as far as I know.
Barb, I'd like to thank you and Chris and Robin for putting together what you did for the McWhoppe Dinner.
Thank you.
I didn't do anything.
I thought you were in the meetings and stuff, and Al, thank you for taking care of that.
You're welcome.
I mean, I think it was a very long planned thing, I think it's, you know, things were well.
I had several people email me the next day to tell me how much they enjoyed it, and how good the food was and everything, so.
Definitely, not just because it was here, but I, I think it was one of the best ones I've been to, so definitely, I'll echo what Tom said there, for sure.
So I like that.
Anybody wanna make a motion to accept that report?
Motion.
Chuck?
Second.
Chris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not much cares. Take a look at the minutes, if there's no questions or corrections, they will go through this, present it. And you can start looking at the Treasury Report and giving a building as well.
Make the motion to accept the devastated and those pending Treasuries Report?
I'll second that.
Chris makes the motion, Brett seconds, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Other question?
This man.
The Library Committee.
Yes.
Okay, how much are we, we're giving them a allotted amount? And what is that being used for?
Being used for, for whatever they wanna use it for, that's a twenty thousand dollars donation that we give in for quarterly sales.
Well, they've, they've, this has been a couple of months now, but they have not gotten a director. And I think that money could be used for other things, if they're not going to. I was told by someone who works in that library that the community does not want that library. So if we don't want it, why are we wasting our money?
Whoever said that is not speaking for the community, that's for sure.
No, no, no.
This, this, this body has certainly fought for the library for a long time.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
And it has been a long time waiting for a director, yes, but the next allotment comes in April, and as far as I'm aware, they have accepted applications, they're working towards the interview process, so I would like to think that by that point, they will have one.
Okay.
Or have begun that process.
Okay.
I'm not privy to what's going on inside there, but that's why there's.
Report on anything, I mean, they have financials or nothing.
We never really have got financials.
We should, because we accept it from, we accept it.
Do you make the fire department, do you?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know how the relationships work, it's not unreasonable to me, I wouldn't think they would have a problem with it.
No, it's not, I just think we've never had it before.
If we were to request it, I'm sure they would give it to us, they're a public entity.
Okay.
Yes. Anything else? Robert?
No.
Good. Alright, moving into the committee reports.
Is it approved?
Yes. Maintenance of recent buildings.
The only guy I was about to sign out west end there, but look into it, Brett's already talked to him about getting it back up, so. Do you have anything else, Brett, as far as on the lighting, I haven't caught Tommy.
I haven't talked to Tommy, I know he sent out the south side lighting to the manufacturer to get prepared. Whether it's come back in or not, I don't know, but I'm sure he's been quite busy. He got the one side down, I'm sure as soon as he gets them in, he'll get the other side down, and we shouldn't have any problems, and then we can submit everything to our insurance company, and luckily, it's only gonna cost us our five hundred dollar deductible, so. Yeah, because we're already over five thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a comment, Frank, I don't have you on Facebook, but I have several people that do have you, and they said you were making some free Snyder remarks about Tom Davis Electrical Service, that maybe if he doesn't know what he's doing, we should get somebody that does it, you could ask for a more qualified electrician than Davis Electric. And I don't think those are things, you know, you need what you wanna do, I'm talking.
You were, you were told the wrong thing.
Well, I was told by several the same things were said.
No, that's good, but again, that's out there, this isn't here.
Well, I don't care, you're a public servant.
Okay.
You're a public servant, you live in a glass house.
I do.
Okay, we all do.
Yep, we all do.
So it's pretty bad to see a council member putting things like that on and slamming people in this town.
It is pretty bad when a council member bashes businesses and stuff like that, especially in public meetings.
Well, it's gotten out of hand on Facebook on everybody.
Everything.
The library, everything. Nobody's sitting down to try to make an effort to change, it's either my way or the highway, so people start bashing each other. It's crazy.
Do you have anything else, Tom?
No, I don't.
Alright, we're gonna move on, finance and insurance.
I don't have anything.
Personnel.
I reached out to the employees on Friday, and they had no personnel issues, so we're good.
Community development, planning and parks.
We have nothing.
Alright, well, I'm gonna steal a little bit, since this started as a parks project.
Cool.
The letter that I sent out to everybody, not sent out, but distributed, it's just a copy, you'll see there's X's where there should be numbers. But this is a letter that I will be sending out to businesses, maybe nonprofits in the area, for additional funding or donations, if anybody would like to contribute to the amphitheater. I am putting up the possibility of plaques and bricks, and I'm even open to naming rights, things like that. I will disclose that today, Eats came back with a number that was larger than what we originally talked about, and even larger than what we recently talked about. The project will happen, and we, as we have said from the beginning, we will scale it back if we need to, come in under budget. We're not going to spend any additional funds than what we've already allocated to this project, like we are allowed. So that means something has to go, and it's a smaller scale to begin with, that's what we'll do, and we can always add to it later with fundraising and other grants and whatever else is out there, but.
How much more are we talking?
Hundred thousand.
Let me, just kind of slipped in when we kind of was doing some math, and that's what they sent me, and I said, well, ten percent of that's.
Will your donations be tax-deductible?
Um, I don't know, what do you mean, I don't think so. I don't know, it was done for Heritage, but however it was for that.
Couldn't tell you, because Richard did all that.
I had to reserve that.
Dick Danielson did all that.
Terrible or not?
I mean, I'll look, I'll look into that, but I literally just wrote this in response to what happened today, like, I was trying to get some final numbers before I sent something like this out. My numbers are as finals are gonna get right now, so this is where I'm at. I'll find out the answer to that and what the process is more, but I wanted to kind of counsel to see where I was at, so if there was any major issues or concerns from you all, I would either stand down or make changes or whatever, based on your feedback.
Well, I'm sure that we could probably get the Hilltop Heritage to do some fundraising to help.
Okay, Barb, we're, we're not a 501(c)(3) as a Borough, okay? Unless we could somehow move that project, and I'm just speculating, thinking out loud, unless we can move it through, and it became a project of a 501(c)(3), I don't know how we could.
You couldn't do it, because you've been given grant money towards Borough, you can't transfer that grant money to somebody else.
This is my, this is based on my understanding that the Heritage Park was fully funded through.
It was.
Donations.
Yeah.
So there is a process and a mechanism by which that can happen.
And I can't tell you that, because that was handled by Dick Danielson.
Which is fine, I'm, I'm willing to find it, we'll figure it out, but.
Representative from Warren, wasn't it?
Kathy Pratt.
Kathy Pratt, yeah, the monies were donated without Kathy.
What was his name?
Yeah.
Before Kathy took on?
I know.
He's the one that gave us fifty thousand dollars of state money to start that project.
Yeah, no.
I don't know, I know Dick got like sixty or seventy thousand dollars in donations.
Yeah, I know.
So, I'm, I'm, I'll figure out how it all works, but that's where I'm at.
Four hundred and, sorry, talking out loud, but reach out to Andrew Zornacki, Chris Lush's office, because there's always friends available for projects like that.
The, the grants have just, we're, we're already two grants in, and one of them has a deadline of this year to have to get this thing moving, so I need to lock in what it's going to be, and if, and that's why it was always designed to be able to scale back if it had to. If the numbers came in too high, this estimate that we're working on is, what, two years old? And prices have skyrocketed, so I think that's why we're where we're at, to make the adjustments that are necessary, and, and go from there.
Give her a link from ours on as much as you can.
There you go. You didn't have anything you said for any, for that, for parks?
Parks, no, actually, those guys showing up, they got more accomplished than I did.
I've got a five-year plan for the park, if anybody'd like a copy of it, so we all know what we're talking about next time, so I did bark on for me in a minute.
Okay, great.
So I have extra copies.
Fire Department, Scott's not here, he wanted to express his thanks, with Borough's help with the trucks, and with the street signs and everything we've done, he sits, other than that, there's nothing going on with the fire department. Library, I think we kind of covered that, I don't know what else might be going on there, I don't think there's anything more that we know about. They're open as best they can be with volunteers, they're posting some things on Facebook to let people know what they're doing.
They got an art class or something coming up, right?
Yeah, well, they do our club every week, and I guess a few other things are getting back going. No director as of this time, so.
Don't they have glasses for this solar eclipse thing, are they gonna do something with that?
I don't, you'd have to attend one of their meetings and talk about it.
We're not in a good place for solar, air, the western eclipse, is that what you mean?
I don't know, it's supposed to be a good day.
It's supposed to go right over us.
Yeah, it's gonna go right over us, it's just a matter of whether we'll see it.
I think it's lower than us.
Not like, we're not gonna have total, we're gonna be.
You have to almost go to Erie to have.
Sure, yeah. Sure we do.
Oh, that's supposed to be the best view here.
We're on, we're on the fringe of it.
Yeah. We'll see something.
Well, it'll be, it'll probably be determined by weather, how much. I can't go to daytime sewer meetings anymore, Brett, you got anything?
Next one.
It's still flowing downhill, next month you'll be able to go to the evening one.
Yay!
We're having a work session.
Okay.
Frank goes. Who do I know? I said he goes. I do know.
Well, you have a report?
He's got questions.
Is it still flowing downhill?
Still flowing downhill. Brett's still a bad guy. Well. No, I didn't say that there.
Well, it's not there.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Let's not pick fights. I just wanted a sewer report.
No.
It's about you.
Alright, code enforcement.
Um, Brett, you can help me explain this if I don't do this right. Um, a gentleman had contacted Barb about, he's going to lease some property in the borough, and he wants to hunt on it. Uh, it's Lime Emporium Highland LL three LLC owns the property. It goes, I understand, up behind Dayton Street and then down Campbelltown Road, like behind, uh, Troutman's and all that. Um, I know we do have an ordinance that you're not allowed to discharge a gun in the borough. But I think with hunting season, and since some of our borough is kind of hunted on because of the way the state rules are for hunting, I don't think we push it too much. Is that correct?
Well, in talking with Barb about it, I got, we got thinking. While we have ordinance as a state you're not allowed to discharge in a borough, it's kind of superseded by state game commissions and the fact that if you are outside of the safety zone, you're perfectly able to hunt, whether it's in a borough or a township.
Right.
So I think the best course action would be to reach out to our solicitor and get an interpretation, like you say. Because like, out behind, uh, the old sewer pond and the, you know, the old trussel and stuff, while that's still in the borough, it's, it's well outside of anybody's safety zone. So I don't know, one, we couldn't particularly enforce it anyhow if somebody's out, you know, part of it goes behind, um.
Up behind.
The trailer park and things like that, that's a big no man's land. But if you're out of the safety zone, I would think that the state's really superseding our.
I would question the, the boundary lines out, at, behind Dayton Street because of the proximity to the trail.
Yes, but also it's still, if you're not in the safety zone, then everybody's to wear orange in hunting season. I don't think that's gonna be the same thing with.
Seal town season hunting out there anywhere near the trail, it, it's just because of it, some people, it moves this fair game.
I get that. There's, there's hunting through the whole.
No, it's not fair game.
I, I'm sure people probably walk on the trail, want their hunting, you know what I mean?
I've heard that. I don't hunt, I just, just trying to bring up any potential.
I know, it's definitely a safety issue. You better, better be sure to have your orange on it, especially if you have your handles if you're going out.
I would definitely support the decision to make sure we get it right with the solicitor.
I can't see it now. If they put in a rifle range or something, or a shooting range, which was one thing that he thought about, now that might be different. I don't know.
So who's gonna reach out to this list?
Well, we'll send an email through the office and figure out where we're at with it.
Alright.
I'll send him the.
Thank you, Barb.
The old trust. It's a nice way of saying Barb's gonna do it.
I liked it, through the office, that was good.
Yeah.
That's code. Do you have anything else?
The old trust.
Yeah, the old trust.
Alright, that wraps up committees. Moving on to old business.
Yeah, you do.
Five-year plan, still floating?
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna do that this year though.
We can have them, when it comes up to look at those things, maybe he could look at the building.
That's true.
That's true, get a hold of shot.
Yeah. Alright, that sounds like a plan to me. Uh, any updates on Sister City?
No, I've reached out to them, but they didn't get back to us. I just, it's like an automated thing, so I think I just need to, maybe we need to follow up again. I just emailed. I, I don't know if they, if they have their like info now, but I don't know. Um, just maybe a little bit more aggressive push to get over them, so I can work on it.
Perfect, thank you for that. Energy audit?
You didn't hear anything in the office, did you, Barb?
No, I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
So I'll just stay there. Uh, new business is the number one, so we're number one. That's all I got. Uh, anything from the public in response to what we have discussed here tonight?
I do. Um, Brett, thank you for getting the picture for me tomorrow. I had a tight. I want to, um, maybe focus on the cell tower. Can you brief us on that, like, who it is, what service it's gonna be, where it is, um, as much as you know on it?
Yeah, uh, unofficially, I talked to the general contractor who was down there. The name of the company that we had entered into agreement with was called Vertical Bridge. Um, they're out in Pittsburgh, and they worked on the agreement between the regional sewer authority and themselves to lease the property for twenty-five years. Um, we're getting like eight hundred dollars a month with a two percent escalator every year. So it would be pretty good for the sewer authority. Um, it is my understanding that it is a Verizon tower, uh, initially. Now, they may add carriers down there, they may not. It is going to be located, uh, at the bottom of the sewer plant, adjacent to the third and final pond and the sand filters off to the left in a vacant field that we have. It'll be fenced in, road railway will be placed into it, they'll be taking care of our, uh, access road. And like I said, they believe it'll be up and running within two months, so.
Within what?
Two months.
Two months.
That'll be the, uh, finish of, uh.
Two more months from now?
That's, I asked them, how long are you gonna be here working on it? They said, month and a half, two months, and that was a week and a half ago.
Nice, okay.
Hopefully, we'll be better equipped with five G cell service for Verizon customers, of course, I'm an eighteen and two customer, so. I'm working for my.
Our service will continue to suck.
I don't know, is it any calls?
An eighteen and two.
When it goes five G, I'm in big trouble.
Oh, I don't know.
It runs off everything.
Uh, Kelly, did I see your hand up?
Yeah. I want to go back to the Tom message regarding public officials. I would just say, please watch yourselves. Um, things have happened in our business in town, our cafe, that was very, um, businesslike for the, the, the council. Um, freedom of speech is allowed, I understand that on both sides. Uh, just, no one needs to be threatened in any way. If you have or need a five oh one C three.
No, no. Can you clarify the threatening?
I, I would prefer you don't.
Okay. Um.
Not necessary.
I, I have nobody, you?
You? I didn't ask for it to be brought up, but I don't know, it was brought up because it's a concern. It is something that happened.
Mount Jewett Hilltop Heritage Coalition is a five oh one C three. Um, if there is something we can do to help with donations. And I don't know how to do that, it costs a lot of money, and we're not that type of organization. But if there is anything that we can do to help so that you guys can accept and have them as taxable, uh, donations, do let us know.
I'll see what it works.
Since your project may be more, should we then, uh, purchase the thermometer that we had talked about? You had fully funded the project, and then we were exacting our decision.
The project is still fully funded.
Okay.
I will not be increasing that number or asking for any more from the taxpayers.
Thank you. And thank you, um, Barb and team for the McQuoppet dinner, it was well received by all.
And then real quick on, uh, your Comcast, Bill, with the, uh, library and with the office down here. Our township, uh, we're spending, uh, close to four hundred dollars a month for Comcast. And, um, between the office and our garage, and we talked with and entered into a ten-year locked-in agreement with Verizon under five G that they have down there. And it was just very good internet, it's as good as Comcast air, and we're getting it for around a hundred dollars a month. We did cancel our garage, that saved about seventy dollars, but, but, uh, once you get the tower running down here and see how it will perform, it's not gonna be hard.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. Thank you for that. Alright, anything else? Alright, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I do adjourn.
Chris makes the motion. Tom's already. All those in favor? Any opposed?